Well, good morning, everyone. Thanks to those who came out to visit during the rainy weather. I guess it's better than two feet of snow. This is our regular meeting for April 26th. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite Jim Keen up to provide the invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Well, good morning, Jesus. Thank you for being available to us whenever we call. We never get a recorded message saying wait for the next operator when we talk to you. There are some here today perhaps who life has been just a real good cruise down a highway, and others have areas of their life that they like driving on a mud road with bad tires. But you're here for us when we ask for wisdom and clarity. Dallas, Chris and Grant are good men who were seeking the best for our county. But sometimes the road ahead is not real clear, and they need your wisdom. Give that to them today and in the days ahead. In Jesus' name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance. Thank you, Jim. And for those that may not know, Jim Keen is the chaplain for the sheriff's office. All righty. So the time's 9:02. Amanda, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder?
All righty, we do have a quorum. Commissioner Schroeder's got some family business he's taking care of today. So the first item of business we have today is approval of the agenda before us. Accept a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
All second. Motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. First item of business we have are just the items on consent. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All second. We have a motion and a second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to elected officials, department head and staff reports. Do we have any elected officials with reports today? Sherri, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Sherri Hewlett, Elbert County Treasurer and Public Trustee, just wanted to go over the quarterly report just a little bit. Nothing major for those who are listening or may not have seen the report. As you can see, obviously, releases are in the first quarter of '23 are way down in comparison to '22, which, you know, could mean one of two things. People aren't refinancing, they're not paying off their homes. But typically, we're a lot higher than 186 in a quarter. Foreclosures, though, I'm happy to report, we're still at 11, as you see on this report, which are three more than what we had this time in the first quarter of 2022. And then we've had several withdrawals, so that's a good thing. So I'm happy to report that. As far as property taxes are concerned, first full payment is due this week. The deadline is April 30th, which does fall on a Sunday. So citizens that are listening online or whatever, you'll have till Monday, May 1st, to get that payment in. And we do accept postmarks. So other than that, just wanted to kind of let you know what's going on with the quarterly report. And we're still making our fees, so that's a good thing.
Well, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Moving on to staff. Shane, I see you're teed up, so.
Good morning. Shane Pines, Office of Emergency Management Director. Commissioners, I just wanted to follow up for you all and for my peers as well to just give a brief update on the fire, the Simla fire, and let you. Yes, sir?
Put the mic a little closer to you.
How about now? All right, I'm gonna lean over a little. I think some of it is, I'm too tall. Oh, thank you. So the Simla fire was known as the 125 Fire, Simla Highway Fire, took place on March 30th. Took place within the Simla Fire District, but also within the boundaries of El Paso County. If you see the dot-dot-dash line, that is the L boundary of our county. And you can tell that it is actually within the El Paso boundaries, but within the Simla Fire District's boundaries as well. The fire was approximately 853 acres in span. Originally, the fire was believed to be in Matheson. And then after further investigation, they found it was just south of Simla. Multiple structures were threatened. One of them is pictured there. A big thanks really to our fire, to our road and bridge, Public Works, to a variety of different departments that rallied to respond, both on the front end in terms of the response on site, and in response in the EOC, public information, and various other agencies that supported with making sure the public was aware of the incident and what was going on. A number of agencies responded, including four different counties. We had state, two state different entities, including our state fire and our state Department of Homeland Security. We had 10 EOC emergency support functions supporting this particular incident. Thank goodness it did not actually impact any structures, nor the town. Had it, though, I think we were primed and in a good position to be able to address at least the first 24 to 48 hours of the incident. We did activate a human and an animal evacuation center here at the fairgrounds. Had great support from our county departments on that front, as well as volunteers from within the community, including a county volunteer organization called the Disaster Volunteer Team. Here's a little better geographic perspective of it. The line on the road on the west side there is the 125 road that leads into Simla. Amanda, I may have to ask you to advance it for me. Thank you. And here's a better perspective of it. This aircraft is looking northwest. You can see the burn scar south of town. The town is to the right in the picture. In terms of just feedback and for everyone's awareness, a public alert and warning message did go out to the town of Simla. Our Douglas County dispatch pushed that out. And looking at the census, the alert attempted to reach 706 contact points. It was able to connect with 61% of those contact points. A variety of reasons that could be, including old numbers, dated information, people not updating their accounts, so on and so forth. We did have good public information, coordination between the site. Elizabeth Fire took the lead on our public information. And then we also had good coordination behind the scenes with three different other individuals, including county PIOs. And Chris, appreciate you showing up as well, being able to monitor that. So all in all, from my understanding, it was fairly successful. Yesterday, we had held an after-action review for a number of different agencies, including multiple counties, the state as well. We discussed a variety of different topics to address what have we been doing right? How have we been improving? How have we been advancing? As well as our gaps, gaps that we've seen in the past and our current gaps, to see how we can continue to shore those up, both as individual agencies and then collaboratively within our own county and our adjoining counties. That's all I have. Do you all have any questions?
Saving the buildings that you said that the fire got close to, it was putting fire breaks with road and bridge? Is that how they protected those houses, or was it something else?
I believe it was a combination of the two. I know Monty could actually speak to that. He was on site running incident, he was with unified command. So I know he would probably be able to address that better. The graders were definitely active that day and played a huge role in being able to stop the fire from advancing.
Monty Hankins, Public Works Director. Yeah, we had six road graders on site, two water tankers with a total of 15,000 gallons of water. Me and three other supervisors were there as well. The first house that Shane had pictured up there, the one in red, the firefighters actually protected that structure with brush trucks and water. There was another house to the north of that house that we did cut fire line around, the Verver's Ranch. We did cut fire line around it. The fire never quite got there, but it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have got there because we had line cut around it. And then we ended up cutting 30-foot-wide fire line around the entire fire. And apparently, from some of the guys that were out on scene, the fire would race up to where we had cut, and then it didn't have any more fuel. It would just blow out. So it's pretty neat.
I appreciate that.
Just one other quick question. When you said you had fire departments from four counties, I think is what you said.
Yes, sir.
How do you coordinate the activity like that?
That was one of the primary topics of yesterday amongst a variety of us. It's complex, and initially, the short answer is it's chaotic. It usually takes a couple of hours for everyone to get organized, to slow down, and to be able to get on the same page and have an understanding of what do we have to work with and what do we need. So it involves a lot of coordination between dispatches and fire districts, needless to say. Thank you.
Much appreciated. I know it's kind of one of those things where it seems like everybody's at their best when things are at their worst. And then when it resolves, we go back to fighting our turf battles. But it's just really well done all the way around. I know we had a couple of folks show up and a few animals at the fairgrounds after the evac. That was relatively quick. About the time they showed up, I think, was when we were, they were canceling the evac. I can definitely understand with the way the winds were blowing and what the fire was to, you know, it's not often we, I don't, can't remember the last time we had an evac called for an entire town and the county. It was a really good job, but thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do we have any other staff reports today? Okay. Before we move on to public comment, I just wanted to make a note that on the consent agenda, we've added a standing item. Today, it was number five, just acknowledging the minutes of the noxious weed advisory board. We've just chosen to put those in, so there's a public place where folks that are interested can see what the activities of that board are. So moving on, I'll open for public comment at this time. Sir, I believe that's you today.
Tom Gray, 16,000, Highway 86, speaking a little bit for ECEA. Secondhand knowledge we could have to deal with right now. We've had customers, I'm calling them customers because they used to be my customers, but constituents of yours that are complaining that they're getting a little bit of pressure from XL, intimidating pressure as they're being approached. As you're aware, we've been selling signs, trying to get people aware that they have some rights moving forward from XL. I personally have driven and spoke to probably 60 households on the preferred route and on the alternate route that they're proposing. As we know, until we get them to pull a permit, if they pull a permit, you guys can't speak to it, but we can speak to the people that are out there. As to date, I have not found anybody that's in favor of this power line, needless to say. But if you just, if commissioners would just keep us informed as to when we have a pre-application meeting, because I understand that that's not necessarily public record at that point in time. But if you could speak to that for us at some point in time, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, did we have anybody that wanted to be called for public comment or any email comment?
No, I didn't receive anything.
Okay. With that, I'll close public comment. Sir, thanks for kind of the update of what's going on out there. Certainly don't like the sound of our citizens being pressured or intimidated. If anybody does want to reach out directly, it's probably most appropriate to have them contact Community Development at this point. Just if there's interactions, and we'll have CDS bring that to whoever's appropriate to respond. Again, we've not received any requests for a pre-application meeting at this time.
Just one other quick comment is I'm sure you're aware that several individuals, I don't know if the 60 that you mentioned, have found XL representatives or consultants or something on their land. And our attorney sent XL a letter explaining that that was inappropriate.
I know their intent, I think, initially was to submit applications last fall, then this spring. So we'll see where that goes. Okay. Moving on to discussion items. This will be a Zoom call, so we're gonna take a quick recess probably here in place
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting. You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen until the host admits you to the meeting.
Can you hear us?
Oh, I can.
All righty. Hey, we have arrived. This is, yeah, welcome. This is Commissioner Chris Richardson. You got myself, Commissioner Thayer, county manager, county attorney, and several others in the room today. This will be recorded. It's being livestreamed, and it will be recorded, so. But thank you for joining us today. I'll kind of turn it over to you.
Awesome. Thank you for having me. Can you guys see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. I can't see you, and I apologize that I'm not there in person today. We have a, one of our grant, our funders is coming to town for a site visit here in Yuma this afternoon. And I just didn't think that I would be able to make it to Elbert County and then all the way, all the way back in one day for that. So I apologize about that.
No, understood. I had a meeting out in Yuma Monday, so that was an all-day event for two-day, two-hour meeting. But if you want to click on the, just turn on the camera. Is that, pull up the camera in the room for start video in the lower left.
Hello.
All righty. All righty. I think we're done with, oh, it's back to you.
Okay, perfect. So hi, I'm Jennifer Deem. I am the executive director of Baby Bear Hugs. And I just wanted to join the meeting today and share a little bit about our program. Normally, I would do this with our program supervisor, who is another Jennifer. Her name is Jennifer Payton. And our county coordinator for Elbert County, and her name is Kathy Rupel. Unfortunately, fortunately and unfortunately, they are on vacation this week. We just had our first in-person gala since COVID, since the pandemic. And we had that on Saturday, and so I think quite a few of our staff members took the week off or a few days off just to really kind of recuperate from that ordeal. But it was pretty amazing. And yeah, so unfortunately, they're not here. But I'm hoping that maybe we can stop by and do individual introductions at some point in the future. So I just wanted to share a little bit about our program, Baby Bear Hugs, and what's happening locally in Elbert County. So Baby Bear Hugs is, our legal name is Regional Home Visitation Program. Doing business is Baby Bear Hugs. And so it's kind of funny because I think Baby Bear Hugs doesn't really say what we do. But Regional Home Visitation Program is very clinical, and I think what we do is kind of somewhere in the middle, right? Like, we do home visits, we provide services to families, but we do it in a kind and caring way. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we're located across the eastern plains. And we serve all families with children zero to three. We began in the late 1980s, and it was actually some pretty serious incidents of child abuse and neglect that were happening that one specific child protection team, county child protection team, was seeing. And by the time they got around to the third one, it was a mom who had lived in a rural area. She was out in the country. Her husband was an over-the-road truck driver, you know? So he was gone a significant amount of the time. And her baby was just going through that period of crying where it was, you know, six, five, six, seven hours a day of just nonstop crying. And one day, one night, she just couldn't take it anymore. And she grabbed her baby by the heels of his feet, or her feet, and flung her up against the wall. And she didn't, she didn't die, but she did have life-altering injuries, you know? And of course, mom was not allowed to raise her, and there were a lot of things that happened. And so sitting at that child protection team meeting, there were really insightful people. And they said, you know, that old adage of, at this point, we're just, we're just picking up the pieces, right? There's nothing we can do when a child is injured to that extent or a family is disrupted to that extent. So we're just hearing the stories and living with that. And so they decided what they would do is they would all do a little bit of research. Like, how do we prevent this? What do we do to keep this from happening? To the, to them as much as possible. And what they found was that home visitation was overwhelmingly the answer. I think all of the members at the table came back with home visitation. Because it's something that helps, you know, when a parent doesn't know where to go or what to do, or even what typical child development looks like, stress is increased. And when stress is increased, incidence of child abuse and neglect can, neglect can happen. And so that's really how we were founded. And that was in the late 1980s, like 1989. And at that point, just, just those community members came in and said, well, let's have some volunteer moms who are now moms of older kids, that support moms of new, of newborns and one-year-olds, like the younger kiddos, and just support, you know, they started a volunteer program. There wasn't really any funding in those early years, so they put in, they had a shoestring budget, I believe. The story goes, it was like $237. They each put in what they had in their wallets that day for that first year. In 1995, Baby Bear Hugs became a 501(c)(3), and we received a Child Welfare Enhancement grant. And we were able to expand into counties outside of that original, outside of that original county and really build the program and start with some really intentional education for our staff and hiring on staff. And we've just really grown since those, since those days, early days in the late 1980s. Our programs are universal, meaning that they're available to all parents. So there's no income guidelines or any other guidelines that you might see in other home visitation programs. They're also voluntary, which means families that participate are there because they want to be there, and we know what a huge difference that makes. And we serve families prenatally all the way through age three. And depending on a family situation, we can even visit families until their child turns five. So just really intentional. A lot of times, we'll spend three to five years with one family, which is pretty amazing. So all of the programs are free, and we provide parenting education, support, and connection to community resources. Our mission at Baby Bear Hugs is enhancing family strength for happy and healthy children, families, and communities. Knowing that families are at the heart of every community, it really does start with that parent-child interaction. We are in nine counties in eastern Colorado, so the counties that are in blue. And can you guys see my PowerPoint okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So we're in the counties in blue, and as you can see, Elbert County. So it's interesting because Elbert County is our most urban county. And I use that term loosely because the bulk of Elbert County is very rural and frontier. But when you look on a map, so it was so interesting looking on a map. And so all of our other counties, our eight counties, are all considered rural or frontier. But Elbert County is considered urban, and I was not aware of that until this year.
We don't like to be labeled by others. We still consider ourselves rural. No, I appreciate that.
That's awesome. Yeah, because there is so much, there's so much land, and it just is a different, it's different than if you're in the, in like Arapahoe County or Denver County. It just looks different. It's a different place. And so we do cover over 15,000 square miles regionally in Elbert County, specifically 18,051 square miles. In our areas, so when you think about population, we have an average of 1,361 babies born a year. So compared to the mileage or the miles, it was very small birth population. And so oftentimes, we're overlooked because we are, we're very land-rich. And per capita, people, we're not as dense per capita with people. And so I think oftentimes with programs, we're overlooked because of that. Baby Bear Hugs has two home visiting curricula that we use for all of the families that we serve. Visits are provided, they're called Partners for a Healthy Baby and Nurturing Parenting. Visits are provided by certified parenting educators, educators two to four times a month in a family's home, so they don't have to travel because we know how easy it is to get out of your house with a newborn. And so we, we And so, so we, we offer visits in the home, which seems to go over really well. And then of course, for families that aren't comfortable with that, we offer an alternate location or during sickness or even like this winter when we had some of those storms that came in, we can provide telehealth services. Each visit is personalized to meet the goals of each family. So really looking at what are, what are the family's goals? Is it to go back to school? Is it to, you know, a lot of our families really is around like being the best parents that they can be, breaking a cycle of generational abuse and neglect. So it's like some of those things we can really work with families or connect families to resources to meet those goals. And what's really neat is families can join at any time before their child's third birthday. So sometimes families maybe aren't ready to join the program when their child is born and then their child turns about 18 months, two years and they're like, this is a whole different experience. And, and so they know that they can call, our families know they can call us at any time and we can hop in and support them at that point. Over the years, the program has expanded and transformed since those very lean days of volunteer moms, visiting moms. We've really strengthened and increased our services and, and part of that is these two home visiting curricula that we'll talk about. So the first one is Partners for a Healthy Baby. This was created by Florida State University. It's used in over 2,700 home visitation programs across the nation. It really helps us connect and partner with parents to help build skills and optimal bonding and attachment, really just for that parent-child interaction. It also encourages parents to engage in activities that support all aspects of child's development. So we know there's so many things happening during those first three years. I was listening to the latest research and on brain development in birth to five and what they were saying is that a child's brain is making, I wish I had it with me and I hope I'm not misquoting this. I believe it said five, or every minute, it's a child's brain between birth to five is making 1 million neural connections. And so just thinking about that, like what that means in those earliest years, right? It really is the foundation for the rest of life. So being ready for school, graduation rates, being successful as an adult, all of that happens in those earliest years. We also use another program called Nurturing Parenting. And so this is really a very specific parenting class, parenting program that we used to offer in a parenting class setting, but now we offer it one-on-one with families. This we often use with families who are working to break cycles of, of neglect and abuse themselves. It teaches, it teaches parenting from wherever the parent is in their, in their parenting journey. So that's really nice. So if you have a good foundation, this can just enhance that. And if your foundation is rocky and you don't know, you don't have the skills to parent successfully in a nurturing and kind way, this, this curriculum is, is one of my favorites. And it's also evidence-based. We also provide something called Parenting Essentials 101. So this is, this is like, our team came together and we were like, so what would we provide if we only had families for a couple visits? Because not every family would like a visit weekly or every other week for three years. And so, so we kind of put together things, and these are all offered in our ongoing visits, but for families that don't have the time or desire to be in the program and in a long, for the long term, we can do a little Baby Bear Hugs mini-series. And it includes a Bright by Text, Period of Purple Crying, Medbox and Cavity-Free Kids Visit. And so the Bright by Text visit really consists of games-to-grow-tip cards that have activities for children zero to 12 months. It emphasizes positive parent-child interactions and brain development. Parents also receive a link to an electronic parent handbook that really goes along with everything that's happening during that zero to 12-month stage. The Period of Purple Crying Program, this is something that's so interesting because I think historically, and it reminds me of the story that I shared at the very beginning about the mom that hurt her infant. Historically, we thought of crying babies as something wrong with the parent, something wrong with the child. And what they found is that healthy babies can cry a lot during their first five months of life. And, and so something that we have called colic is no longer being viewed as colic because that's almost saying like something is wrong with your child and, and nothing is wrong. What they found is that for all mammals, not even just human beings, there's a period of crying that starts about two weeks and increases until about four months. That's, that's just the typical part of development. And so they don't understand it quite, they don't understand it really, they don't know what causes it. But some babies do this at, at high rates of crying, so they're the babies that cry for five hours a day, six hours a day. And then some babies you hardly even notice that it's an increased crying because they're not high criers. And so just to be able to educate families about this period of development is huge. I think back to that first mom that harmed her baby, the reason we were created, and I think, I wonder if she would have known that this is something that was developmental, it wasn't something she was doing wrong and there were tools to step away or to soothe her baby? I just think sometimes about how much different that, that could have been for her. We also provide something called Medboxes. This stands for Mental, Emotional and Behavioral Health. This was created from, was a creation of the High Plains Research Network upstream together. And we just got lucky enough to be in on those conversations. It was going to be a much bigger project and then they didn't end up receiving funding for it, but Baby Bear Hugs did. Because I think we were a much smaller scale and we were focused on parents and children and mental, emotional and behavioral health at that pregnancy, one year, two year and three year after birth stage. We know that depression is the most common complication of childbirth. And so when you think about that, pregnancy-related depression is, and when you think about that, it's not talked about and there's a lot of shame associated with it. So we really work to normalize discussions with, with new moms around pregnancy-related depression and give them tools. So what, what offsets that is having a caring support network connecting to mental health resources. And so we do all that. We often in times, if a parent is struggling with mental, with mental health, we will increase our visits. If we're only visiting every other week, we'll increase them to once a month, or once a week. And, and also work together with local partners, mental health providers and partners to get them involved in mental health supports. This, thinking about this, so like I said, we just had our gala on Saturday and a family that we serve, so we had a couple tables from foundations that donated our tables to families we served. They said, we want families to be able to enjoy the evening. And a family from Elbert County came and was at one of the tables and our Yuma County parenting, our coordinator was sitting at the table with her and her husband. And, and they didn't know each other and it was, we were driving home, me and our, me and the Yuma County parenting coordinator, we were driving home and she said, you know, the mom I was sitting next to looked at me during the night and said, you know, Baby Bear Hugs saved my life. And she talked about how she was struggling with, with her first child, she was struggling with postpartum depression and anxiety and Baby Bear Hugs was able to like help normalize that for her, get her connected to mental health services. And I thought, so just so you know, next year, she's going to be our success story at our gala because what a, what a powerful thing to hear, I think for us and then for her, her visitor and you just don't really know the impact that you make. And then sometimes, sometimes you get to hear those stories and so it was pretty neat to hear. So we also provide in that mini-series, we also provide a cavity-free kids' visit. So we know that oral health is huge. A lot of people don't think that baby teeth are important, but your baby teeth are your foundation for language development. The, they save places for your permanent teeth, right? If your baby teeth have caries or cavities, it, it's more likely that your adult teeth will have those. So we really focus, we take some time to focus on oral health and just starting those positive routines early on. So those were the four things that we do when a family isn't, they're like, yeah, we want, we would like some visits, we would like some information, but we don't want to commit to visits every other week for three years, three to five years. So during, at any time, whether we're visiting a family ongoing or if we're visiting a family during those one-time visits, or if we're out and about at community fairs, or if maybe a Department of Human Services calls and a, and a family just received a two-year-old and they want to see where their child is developmentally, so at any point we can do an ages and stages questionnaire with families in the community. So they don't have to be signed up. It's just a way to make sure that children are developed, developing appropriately and also for parents to understand typical or where their child should be at any given stage. Some fun facts about Baby Bear Hugs is that we have 20 staff members in nine counties. Two of them are in Elbert County. 10 staff work-bearing degrees of part-time and both of our Elbert County staff are part-time. We have 11 Board of Directors members and so we have a representative, the way our board is set up is that we have a board member from each county that we serve. We have a member at large and then we have a games manager that can, that runs kind of our, our raffles, make sure that all of those things are running smoothly and up to date. In Elbert County, we have nine advisory committee members. These members come together on a monthly basis to meet and discuss happenings in the Elbert County Baby Bear Hugs program. They talk about successes and challenges that are happening within the community. And they also help us fundraise. So, so when you hear Baby Bear Hugs in the community and we're doing fundraisers, it's our advisory committee members and our two staff members that are really doing all that work. Annually, we have about a little over 2,000 hours of donated time from community members and our credo is empowering families. A little bit of how we're funding, funded. So Baby Bear Hugs is funded, we are not a governmental organization. We are funded through many grants, both statewide grants and local foundation grants. We also receive support from our local county Department of Human Services. In Elbert County, we have a very generous TANF grant, which is awesome. When we first started, we actually came to Elbert County in 2000, we started in 2009-10 talking about adding Elbert County as a family. And it was, I don't know if you guys know Catherine Reiver, she was the previous Executive Director of the Early Childhood Council. But I think she was looking for, for a program to offer families in the community. And so she looked around and she saw some of the bigger, more urban home visitation programs and didn't feel like that was a good fit. And so she reached out to our previous Executive Director, Ruth Seedorf, and they started having those conversations in 2009 and 10. And then I think we started receiving TANF funding from Elbert County in 2011, 12. I think that was our, our first year. And so we've been very grateful for that. We also receive in-kinded office space for most of our, for most of our counties. And so you might hear that Elbert County, right now, we are without an office space, but we are looking, we're hoping to get it in-kinded. It might be a, it might be an impossible feat, so we're also looking at how we can move around our budget to see what that looks like in the future, in the future years. Spaces for playgroups or meetings are often donated by churches. Local businesses and community members are also very generous in donating to the program through gifts and donations. So I think that's all I have for you today unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, just a comment saying, thank you for your service to the county, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you and, and thanks for supporting us. Yeah, and, and I hope to get down there in person to introduce myself and meet the three of you in person soon.
Okay, no, thank you. I mean, wonderful organization. I mean, the initial story is pretty, pretty shocking and unfortunately still all too common, but you know, something good's come of it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
Oh, we will, thanks.
Bye.
Alrighty. I think I declared a recess while we were setting up and never came back, but if you could, we, we obviously were back in session during that presentation, so, okay. Next item up we have is just an update on the request for proposals for the county master water plan. Mark?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, other electeds, staff, fellow citizens. I'm Mark Denrator, Director of Community and Economic Development. I am here, yes, to provide just a brief update on the Water Master Plan project that we're going to be conducting this year. Right now, we're in the RFP, Request for Proposal Phase. I'm going to cover the timeline in a moment, but first just some background and a little bit on the focus of the study. First off, Elbert County obtained a $45,000 grant for this project through the Colorado Water Conservation Board. Elbert County is going to be matching that. The proximate total for this study should be around $90,000. The Water Master Plan is actually an action item out of our County Comprehensive Plan. And then this study will build on the 2018 Rural Water Supply Study as well as the USGS Well Monitoring Study. We are hiring a consultant to assist us with this project, hence the RFP. The Water Master Plan is going to be focusing on really the solutions for new development within that 300-year water rule that we have here in Elbert County. The main point, if you really look at it globally, so to speak, is really does the water supply in Elbert County support future growth? Also, it's important, a really key piece of this in our minds is to ensure that the study is written in plain English, plain language. Oftentimes, we know these studies can get pretty technical, so obviously you want the technical pieces, but have it described in a way that for someone like myself can understand it. We'll be looking at, you know, especially when you're describing the technologies, the impacts on individual well owners and community systems, things of that nature. We're also going to be validating the supply and drawdown trends in this study, further show some impacts of water use scenarios on communities and households. And then conservation is also a component of this. What resources are available to, to citizens, developers, the county, et cetera, as it relates to this topic. Now, back to the timeline. The RFP went before the Planning Commission in a work session earlier this month, just had them look at the RFP, got some feedback from them, appreciate their work. The review of the RFP right now is internal. We're going to wrap it up, package it and put a bow on it and send it out in early May. So just right around the corner, we'll launch the RFP. Then of course we'll do interviews and select a consultant to help us with this. And then we're planning to begin the project in July. The, part of this process, obviously, is going to involve forming a steering committee, getting citizen input, towns, obviously the county, any community systems that exist, HOAs, businesses and other types of housing stakeholders. We're going to make sure that we have regular contact with the public on the progress related to this. And then again, can't emphasize enough how important the can't emphasize enough how important the community input is an integral component of this, of this activity. And finally, the project is slated to complete December, early January. That's the, that's the goal. So, should be fun, and appreciate your support on this. Any questions, gentlemen?
I've got a couple of questions. Three, four years ago, we had the Forsgren Study done, water study done, and it was very regional. Are you expanding the regions?
Yeah, thanks for your question, Commissioner. Yeah, as you mentioned, the 2018 Rural Water Supply did have that eastern county focus, more regional there. This, this plan is certainly going to encompass the, the entire county, and then we certainly are going to be looking to surrounding counties and see what, what's going on there. It's, we, we have been told, it's our understanding that Arapahoe County, obviously to the north, they are actually involved in a Water Master Plan at present. El Paso County has conducted one as well. So we'll certainly, with the, the work of our consultant, be sure to reach out and to integrate as, as we can with those entities.
I was going to say, Mark, I do appreciate your approach to us. I know there's a lot of elements of study and validating data that we've put together in previous studies, but I think the, the plan part of it, the, the actual actionable, what do we do going forward? Do we need to make updates to regulations, et cetera, I think is going to be where the real power is. We know we can't produce more water, but how can we conserve while serving our current and future populations, I think, is, is really what we're open to get out of this, and I think that's the direction you're taking.
Thank you. Agreed.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
All righty. So moving on to action items. First item up we have is consideration of our minutes from the April 12th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the April 12th, 2023 minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
I'll second that. We've got a motion and a second to approve the April 12th minutes and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we've got to bear with us. We've got a series of proclamations. The first is one supporting our, our local agriculture industry and specifically acknowledging that this year's annual meet-in day.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll read this, but I want to make a comment first, and that is, is that agriculture is very important to Elbert County. I've owned significant amounts of land in the county over the years, and I put, personally put 20,000 acres in a conservation estimate, so it could never be converted from agriculture. With that in mind, the history of our politics in the county have led us to this proclamation, so I'm going to read it now. Proclamation saluting and strengthening Elbert County Livestock Producers Annual Meet-In to be held April 29th, 2023. Whereas cattle and other livestock production has historically been and continues to be one of the key economic drivers in Elbert County, and whereas Elbert County cattlemen and our ranching families are part of a four-point, I didn't say that right, $3.4 billion state industry with a $40 billion economic impact and accounts for 10% of the state's total exports and sales. Whereas the U.S. Department of Agriculture has reported the annual sale value of Elbert County cattle, calves, poultry, and hogs exceed $26 million. And whereas employment in the agriculture sector and related industries provides jobs over the 1,000 Elbert County citizens, for over 1,000 Elbert County citizens, a very large number of which are involved in ranching and livestock production. And whereas Elbert County is a declared right-to-farm county and has taken regulatory steps to protect our active farms and ranches, and whereas the 2020 to 2025 dietary guidelines issued by the U.S. Drug and Food and Drug Administration recognizes that a variety of animals and plant proteins are important to a healthy diet. And whereas in March 2021, the Governor of Colorado encouraged a boycott of meat products referred to as a "meat-out" in order to promote meatless diets as promoted by the Farm Animal Rights Movement, parentheses, farm, and whereas in response to this call for boycott, multiple civic and agriculture organizations came together to sponsor a meet-in, and a, a, a public event celebration of the county's meat production industry, and this has become an annual event. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Elbert County Board of County Commissioners of Elbert County, Colorado declares its support for our cattlemen and other livestock producers designate them as key and essential to our local economy, and proclaims March 29th, 2023 as Elbert County Meet-In Day. I move that we approve and adopt this resolution, proclamation.
I'll second. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Grant. I know just our previous speaker and that little back and forth about, there are some that consider us to be an urban county or a metro county. I don't think that's the way we view ourselves, but I know it isn't. Ranching and farming is actually the largest employer, that's the largest employment sector in this county. So, whether it's on-farm, on-ranch, or related industries, veterinarians, farriers, feed, meat cutters, et cetera, people related to working directly in ag or related to is our largest employer, and that's something that should be celebrated and, and supported, and we, we try to. So, this Saturday, the Elizabeth Meat Locker is again hosting the meet-in. They're, they will take donations, but it's really just a public celebration of, of the agriculture industry, and all the proceeds that they're collecting this year will go to Elbert County 4-H to support that program. So, if you're looking for some tasty barbecue on Saturday, head down to Elizabeth. All righty. Alloen, that is a proclamation recognizing the upcoming National Day of Prayer. I would, I'll just go ahead and read it for now, and then we'll look at motions to adopt. But this is a recognition of the annual day of prayer to be held on May 4th, 2023. And it begins, "On this year's National Day of Prayer, let us come together in love, life, and liberty, all according to our own faiths, to thank God for our many blessings and ask for continued guidance and strength." And then it reads, "Whereas the President of the United States and the Governor of Colorado have each declared May 4th, 2023 as a national day of prayer, with a theme derived from James, Chapter 5, Verse 16, which directs the faithful to pray fervently in righteousness and avail much. And whereas, public calls to prayer have a long and honored history in our nation, to wit, in 1775, the First Continental Congress called for a national day of prayer and fasting. In 1863, Abraham Lincoln called for a national day of prayer. And whereas in 1952, Congress established a national day of prayer as an annual event by a joint resolution. In 1988, that was amended and designated as the National Day of Prayer, to be held on the first Thursday in May. And in 1998, the law was amended once again, adding that the President of the United States is to issue a proclamation for the event. And whereas, in 2014, the State Supreme Court upheld the legal authority to declare, declare days of prayer in Colorado. And whereas our nation's founding fathers produced the Declaration of Independence and its enumeration of the self-evident truths that we all cherish today, asserting that all men and women are created equal and endowed with, by their Creator, with certain and alienable rights, including life, liberty, and pursuit, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the Colorado Constitution documents that the state was established with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe, and Elbert County is a political subdivision thereof. And whereas prayer, by which we affirm our dependence on the supreme ruler, has long been fundamental to our constitutionally-supported pursuits of freedom, peace, unity, and prosperity. And whereas spiritual health is a critical component in conjunction with physical, behavioral, and mental health of overall individual and public health, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Elbert County Board of Commissioners that May 4th, 2023 shall be designated as a day of prayer in our county. We encourage all citizens to observe this day, reflecting on the blessings of our nation, state, and county, and the importance of prayer in the lives of our fellow citizens." I would accept a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we approve the proclamation, the recognition of the annual National Day of Prayer, May 4th, 2023.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This will be next Thursday, the event for the county. We've got multiple churches in the area that have come together along with several civic organizations to put together an event in Running Creek Park in Elizabeth. There'll be food there too. So if you've recovered from meet-in day and are ready to eat again, and, and meet with your fellow citizens, I know everybody is invited, and I know there are signs around the county. I believe it begins at 6:00. All right. Just to complete the trinity, we have a proclamation recognizing Small Business Week. Mark, if you could?
Good morning again, Commissioners. Thank you. Mark Denrider, Director of Community and Economic Development. I invite you to join myself and our team in the county in celebrating National Small Business Week. This will take place from April 30th to May 6th. For over 50 years, the U.S. Small Business Administration, the SBA, they've been supporting this event. It's a, obviously a great time to acknowledge and recognize the critical contributions of our entrepreneurs and small business owners. Kind of a cliche, but it's so true. Small businesses make America home. I mean, they are the, the engine of our economy. According to the SBA, there are more than 33 million small businesses in the U.S. That accounts for over 99% of all U.S. businesses. The SBA administers the Small Business Development Centers, the SBDC program. Just this past BOCC meeting, as you recall, our local SBDC agency presented an annual report, an update to y'all, and of course, our economic development team partners with the SBDC agency. In 2021, records were broken for new business starts, new business applications. There were 5.4 million business applications filed in the U.S. that year. You can, that illustrates the fact that entrepreneurship is booming. And on that note, we have an entrepreneur here with us today, a local business owner, to help us celebrate this National Small Business Week. I'd like to invite up Richard Kirch, and he owns the Car Wash right here in Kiowa, the Kiowa Car Wash, and like him to have an opportunity to, to visit with you briefly about his business.
Welcome, sir.
Greetings. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me, Mark. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Robert Kirch. I actually live at 9197 Red Poppy Court in Parker, Colorado. Spend a lot of time out here in Kiowa. I love it. I'm the, if you don't know anything about it, it's pretty simple. It's a six-bay, self-service operation. We have vending machine components and things like that. I also have a, an employee there, a caretaker, lives upstairs in our, he caretakes, takes care of the facility when I'm not there, keeps things safe and secure, which is good. Just an overview, we, other than the consumers that come through town, which there's quite a bit, it's, it's amazing. I get out and talk to people, how many people come this, from the surrounding areas, pass through Kiowa. It's such a, I mean, you guys know that already, but that's what I've learned over the years. It's, it's really amazing how many people come through there. Not only just traveling in from I-70 to shortcut into the south into Denver, but from all the other surrounding communities and, and counties. We use a lot of local vendors and for our services and things like that to support them, which is, it's always good. And even gone a little further to kind of expand things into, I made, came up with a fleet program this year to help our small businesses save money and support their, keep their vehicles main, well-maintained. What else? So how did I end up out here? Mark asked me, and retired about six years ago, and at the age of 65, found I wasn't very good at it, and looked around for businesses to buy. Been in business all my life as an entrepreneur, and found this car wash, and it was in need of repair. Came out, looked it over, and said, I think I can do this. And after a few weeks of wrestling around and talking with my wife, finally decided to jump in, and it's been a very viable business for me after two years of hard work and a lot of learning, which has been good. I guess the next question is, what I like best about Elbert County is the people. I mean, the people out here are just the most amazing thing. One of the things I make an effort to do, which I know you probably don't see very often in, in the car wash industry, where actually interact with the people that come in there. I want to learn about what, what they do and get to know them better, not only for the business, but I'm just from my curious myself, is why people live where they are and do what they do. So, some of the other things that, that make it interesting, I do fundraisers, which if there's anyone listening in that would like to get involved to have a discussion with me about fundraisers, I have a website and the numbers on the building. I do high school fundraisers for the high school athletic programs and support the Harvest Festival and all the other local events here in Kiowa. So I'm always looking for opportunities to do more of that if they're out there. So I guess that's just a general, general overview. I just came to really tell you guys to, always when you're making your decisions on your county changes, and to keep the small businessman in mind, because it not only adds, you know, to our economic base, it also makes the county more interesting with the different types of businesses versus, you know, mass merchants or, you know, big national chains and all that, because they all have their own unique personality, and they work hard, as everyone knows. They work hard to make things happen. It's not an easy task, but it's a rewarding task, and something that I enjoy myself. So, with that, any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Let's stay here in business in Elbert County.
Yes.
No, I appreciate everything you had to say. I mean, a lot of big businesses, but even them, they started as small businesses somewhere, but just, you know, the ability to connect neighbors, I think, that you talk to and actually know who you're serving versus following procedure books that are, you know, lengthy, is important, and obviously just keeping our money local is a good thing, too. So, I, I appreciate you coming in, and I appreciate what, no, I'll be rinsing my windows off so I can see you get home after coming up our muddy roads today.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that. And I, I believe Mark has a proclamation for us.
Thank you, Robert. Robert's one of 650,000 small businesses in the state of Colorado, and that's 99.5% of all Colorado businesses fall into that category, and these businesses employ 1.1 million people in the state. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I'd like to read the proclamation into the record.
Please do.
Okay, thank you. This is National Small Business Week in Elbert County, Colorado, April 30th to May 6th, 2023. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And whereas, from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas, small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy- And whereas, small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do. And whereas, when we support small business, jobs are created, and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, because the country's 33 million small businesses create over 2/3 of the new jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas, the history of Elbert County, Colorado was written by small businessmen and women in many different industries, including ranching, mining, farming, retail, and service businesses, many of which survive to the present day. And whereas, Elbert County, Colorado supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore be resolved by the Elbert County Board of County Commissioners that the members of the Elbert County Board of County Commissioners proclaim the week of April 30th to May 6th, 2023, to be National Small Business Week in Elbert County, Colorado.
Thank you, Mark. I'd accept a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the proclamation, National Small Business Week in Elbert County, April 30th to May 6th, 2023.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll take a quick picture, if you would, but if folks would consider taking the money they save from eating free on Saturday and next Thursday and spend it locally, I think it would be appreciated. All righty. Moving on, we have a resolution for setting fees charged by the sheriff relating to the service of process. If, good?
Good morning, Commissioners. Bart Greer, County Attorney. Something we've already actually discussed at least one prior meeting is the issue of various fee collection on the civil side of things for the sheriff. The sheriff does a lot of things other than just, you know, writing tickets and investigating criminal cases. There's also a whole civil side to that, and then part of that is also service of process, extradition, all of those sorts of things that can incur costs. And the rationale behind this is to be able to recoup those costs. And so most of those, if not all, are actually set by statute, and so this really just lays that out. There is a resolution that is, has been put together. The sheriff's office has reviewed that. I have spoken with the sheriff's office on this issue, and I think whatever questions there were have been answered, and I think we're ready to move forward. So as far as just approval, I would recommend or request an approval to move forward with that.
Thank you. Questions or?
As I read this resolution, it's pretty straightforward, and there's, it's easily to implement.
Yes, Commissioner, it's essentially set by statute. It's expected that there is going to be a need for the collection of these fees because there is a cost that's incurred. So nothing really controversial about it. It's essentially something that the legislature set up so that there is that capability. So, yeah, I think it's very straightforward because it's prescribed by statute itself.
Yeah, I just view it as, I mean, it's established by statute. It just provides something to point to locally that the authorities granted if somebody questions a charge for service.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the resolution setting fees charged by the Elbert County Sheriff's Office relating to service of process.
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution that was provided. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. So next up, we have consideration of the early payoff of the Foxwood Estates bond. Tiffany?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Hermes, Finance Manager. Before you, I have a payment voucher to go ahead and pay off the Foxwood Estates. The principal payment is $60,000, and the interest payment is $1,620. And this will go ahead and pay off saving the people of this PID roughly $31,000, or excuse me, $56,000. Any monies left in this fund at the end of year will be transferred to the general fund to offset the amount that we are paying now.
I appreciate you, one, recognizing that the opportunity was there to save the taxpayers a little bit of money, and I think it's the right thing to do. I think we've been able to pay off all our public improvement districts a bit early throughout the years, and this continues that. You know, Foxwood, it's a relatively small amount of pavement with 35-acre homes, so the burden on each taxpayer's been significant. I mean, it was their choice to tax themselves, but our responsibility to help them do so at the least possible amount, so I do appreciate that. Any comments?
No, I think it's, does demonstrate with your recommendation, of course, that good financial planning and strategic thinking is important, and it's important to the county and it's important to our citizens.
Yes.
With that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the early payoff of the Foxwood Estates bond.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the early payoff of the Foxwood Estates bond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That was the easiest one we've had in a long time.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
All righty. And the last item up we have, we don't have a formal document for signature, but we've talked about this a few times, and that was just amending the BOCC human resources policy to give authority to the county manager to make changes and adjustments as necessary. If we approve, I can sign a memo to put in front of it for...
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amendment to the human resources policy, recognizing that our county manager will be responsible for these issues in the future.
I'll second. So we have a motion and a second to grant authority to the county manager to make changes to the BOCC human resources policy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Again, I think our, what was the number you mentioned this morning? 27 hires since you arrived? Somewhere in that?
22, 23.
Okay. 22, 23. Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, we've come a long way in terms of our human resources department and county management just in the last year. So this allows us to kind of move back into the policy and budget role and leave day-to-day operations to the county manager where they belong, so much appreciated. So agenda items for the next meeting? I don't think we have anything moving forward today, but Amanda?
It's special event permit season, so next meeting, we'll hear a couple of public hearings.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. So we'll have our standard things for the first meeting of the month, plus that, and I'm sure we'll have some more topics that arise. There always seems to be business to do. So with that, we're going to recess until 11:00 a.m. At that point, we'll reconvene here as the Board of Health to get our quarterly Board of Health update. So, thank you.
And we don't have anything this afternoon?
And then, I guess if folks are not coming back for that, I just let you know at this point, we don't have any land use items this afternoon, so the meeting will adjourn after the Board of Health meeting. Thanks.